Would everyone stand to the last group? Roll call. Ms. Vallet. Jarvis. Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Here.
Mr. Grill.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keen.
Here.
Ms. Alcieri. Mr. Vona.
Here.
A good notice of this meeting has been provided by the following meetings. Annual notice was sent by Harold and News, The Record, The South Bergenite, The Observer, County Clerk, and posted in the lobby of the town hall corridor, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings of the board. Rule of minutes for meeting number five.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Six.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keen.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Okay. Public hearing first. Okay. Do we have any?
Good evening. Tonight we have a few students to recognize. And for our first two recognitions, I'd like to ask Mr. Chualik to please come on up and join me. And before I turn this over to Mr. Chualik, so he can really brag about the accomplishments of these students, I want to brag a little bit about Mr. Chualik. And we know that he is only one of the main faces of our outstanding music program. But they offer these kids their time, their knowledge, their expertise, but most of all, their hearts. And it's that which inspires these kids to find music in their hearts and reach these high, high levels of accomplishment and potential that they're achieving. We are so proud of our music program. And the instructors behind the instruments and behind the faces of the students are really to be recognized and honored as well. So congratulations, Mr. Chualik, and I want you to welcome him.
I'm not sure I can do that, not that I'm blushing. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tonight, we'd like to recognize two of our eighth grade band students. Dean Wise and Maria Gashmoe. Does anyone want to come up? I'm very proud to say that Dean and Maria are two of my eighth grade band students from Jefferson School. I'm very proud of all of their accomplishments. Dean and Maria auditioned among the nearly 500 other students to secure acceptances in both the North Jersey Schools Music Association Region One Band and their work. The auditions consist of number I, scaled solo performances and sight reading, never before seen music, and Region One, which consists of students from North Jersey's Seven Counties. It's known for being particularly competitive among the regions. Dean was accepted into both ensembles on the trombone. And Maria was accepted on both, French horn and trumpet, and actually had to choose what to play in case she got in on both, and she did. So it's an incredible amount of dedication on these students, for these students in order to get to that high level of performance. And tonight, I'm very grateful to our superintendent, our Board of Education, for recognizing all of their efforts. So, Mr. Marco, I believe you have... We have some certificates? And the North Jersey Schools Music Association was kind enough to send us commemorative pins for both Dean and Maria to remember their participation throughout the years. So it's my pleasure to present these to them. And thank you again, Mr. Marco, for all of your support.
And as usual, we have students taking us to soaring heights in the classroom as well. So at this time, I'm going to ask two recipients to please come up here while I speak about their accomplishments. Adam and Zooli. So every once in a while, I have the distinct pleasure of receiving in my daily folder something that just makes me put it sticky on it, that just says, "Wow, this is great." And that was exactly what I did when I received this news. The College Board is the international group that handles and manages all of the advanced placement classes, SAT, PSAT. They run a bar of assessments for students at multiple levels. And what the College Board then does is they break down and analyze the data. And from that data, they are really able to zone in on those students whose accomplishments far outshine the accomplishments of others, not only nationally, but internationally. So that's what we're talking about here, folks, right? Something to smile about, for sure. So both Adam and Zooli scored in the top 2.5% on the PSAT among all Hispanic and Latino test takers in this entire region of the United States. How awesome is that? The top 2.5% are then invited to participate in the National Hispanic Recognition Program. So both of these students were given that invitation. Both students will have that opportunity. And not only do they represent themselves, but they represent the first high school and the entire district and all the work that we're doing. And for those of you who may not know the difference, the PSAT is just a practice SAT. So the levels of rigor are just as high, the challenges are just as great, and these accomplishments are just outstanding. So thank you for representing the blue and gold so, so well. And congratulations to you and your families. Great job.
Okay. It'll be long. Finance, Chris.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of hiring facilities from District Planning Committee may so indicate now, a separate motion for each of these actions will be entertained. During non-adjunctive long-term students due to the doubt of the hiring facilities or district planning actions of the Board of the Board, another one to seven.
Second.
Number seven. Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keen.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Policy, Rules, Regulations Committee. Mr. Ravaschado. Okay, just want to bring attention to our Board and to joining number four. The result of the Leonard's Board of Education hereby complies Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through 12th, 2018, for the purpose of providing public recognition, appreciation, for the dedication and contributions of the professional teacher, not only throughout our communities as a whole, but in each of us individually as citizens. So again, we do appreciate you and congratulations. Also, number five. The result of the Leonard's Board of Education hereby declare, May 13th through the 19th, 2018, a special education week. The Leonard's Board of Education furthermore is proud to provide exceptional programs that assist every child in reaching his or her potential. Again, congratulations. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policy, rule, regulations, committee, may so indicate now, a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I request the approval of my items one through six.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keen. Ms. Alcieri. Mr. Vona.
Four.
Athletic student activity, self-respect, sharing.
Any board member who sees that something any of the following listed actions under the category of new business, student activity, club activity, community activities, can propose to each of these, such as that, and to each of these. Hearing none, I make a motion for number four.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keen.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Is the business wrong?
Yeah. I'd like to first say that number two has the wrong date. It's June 30th, 2019, I should say. So any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business, may so indicate now, a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
I'm sorry, I just made some flatter here, because this is a new date. So is this from July 1, 2018, through 30th, 2019? Okay, so if you were to want that full date there.
Full date, yeah.
So if this is not in D, then the Leonard's Board of Education appoints Mitch Minchi and Higgins LOP as school auditors.
Sure. I'm just, we're just having some conversation on item number two under new business. So my understanding from Mr. Grill and Mr. Feisit is that this cost of $35,000 actually runs from July 1, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Everybody understand?
Okay.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keen. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Personnel, two.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions listed under the category of personnel, may so indicate now, a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion number one to 11, Dr. Isret. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Vallet.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Rendonopoulos.
Four.
Mr. Ravaschado.
Four.
Mr. Grill.
Four.
Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keen. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Mr. Vona.
Four.
Okay, public hearing on agenda items, we have three people, Annie Mettaker.
My name is Annie Mettaker, and I am a homeowner, a dedicated ETA volunteer to schools right now, a volunteer volunteer for rec sports. For reasons I say that, and I'm invested in this town. So first and foremost, I want to state that I am publicly noticed down because speaking in this forum is intimidating. And I have seen firsthand some less than stellar treatment of concerned taxpaying citizens in the past. And I have spoken, so I wanted to make sure I didn't double doors. I also want to state that my questions and statements are my own, that the concerned parent happens to confuse with my volunteer rules and many ones. My husband and I are also currently in the process of evaluating whether we want to continue to raise our children in this town. A situation that was brought up most recently by the deficit announcements and the subsequent budget cuts, was all that were being made to make up for that deficit. My two kids, they're in third and first at this point. They're doing okay in our schools. They're performing at what I'd be told was considered an adequate level for this town. My concern is that our adequate level is subpar compared to some of the other towns around us. I'm questioning some of our standards and some of the work things sometimes. One example of the makeup committee is that was suggested improved at half days, whereas other towns, in Bergen, did full days and did curriculum. I've been told by several kids in different schools in this town, that they watch Netflix. I don't know if that's fully accurate, but I know that there was some TV watching instead of curriculum doing. I'm concerned with the class sizes, being that I volunteer at Franklin, I see firsthand, that that will be grossing at the fields of kids. Every available space, including the ESL class, that was announced, that was in a hallway right outside where the lunches, prepare lunches every day. And finally, I was sitting here, and the deficit was announced, and I was sitting here, and Mrs. Marco resigned and stated something to the effect of, although she was not here when it was happening, she felt somehow that she had to, as the leader, take some sort of ownership of the situation. And I respect that, although I also feel it's unfortunate that she was not here when it happened. But I have yet to hear anyone else seem to take any sort of ownership of the situation with the deficit, including those who did every year while it was happening. In my opinion, you should have been the first point of checks and balances to make sure that that did not happen. Especially after I found out that in 1995 it happened already. So I would have thought that we would have made sure it didn't happen again. So my question is, how are we supposed to trust that it's not going to happen again? What checks and balances are in place for avoiding future issues? Because I know when you're working with ETA funds, you have a group of people looking at your books every month, and you have people voting on expenses, and you have people approving it. And there's just checks and balances. And what I've heard so far is two people being blamed for all of it. And they're being singled out as a source of the deficit. And if that's the case, then what's the point of having a board of ed? And they finance it again. It's not to keep tabs on that and to make it not happen again. My other questions to you are, what can you tell us, parents who are concerned that our resources, which are already lacking for the budget cuts, about how that's going to affect the standards with which our children are being held currently? And that the support that our teachers and staff will receive or what they will receive to be able to maintain or raise those standards? Are we studying population trends in order to be able to forecast more kids coming in? There's rumors everywhere about apartment buildings and more kids coming into our buildings. And we have classrooms in the hallways, and I'm nervous about how we're going to handle those. And finally, aside from audits that uncover the deficit situation and the creation of the budget that unfortunately for all of us children in these schools now is going to need a cut to some way, and they're all going to feel some cut in one way. What is being done about the individuals that were involved at the time? What is the board's ownership and responsibility for that situation? I know there are a lot of questions to be asked.
That Netflix thing, very disturbing, we'll look into that. Those rumors certainly, I just want to clarify that. I don't know what to make of that, so I don't want to certify that as accurate. But at the same time, a statement like that is very concerning to me. And I would definitely be looking.
I think it was with my...
Was that?
I think it might have been with Doug.
Okay, but even then, that, we want to keep the kids busy for those four hours. So thank you for that information.
To answer one part of your question about the Board of Education is aware of the influx of students and is preparing for that.
Do you know what the number is?
Unfortunately, we have, see, we have no control down there. They send us whatever they want to send, and there's nothing we can do about it. Okay, but we are prepared for that, as a board. Another part of your question?
So what can you tell me as a parent about the resources going to this year?
Okay, there are no programs and nothing being cut from the children.
Aids in classrooms are not being cut?
Well, not to the point where we're to start construction. Okay? Right now, we have...
Aids are being cut?
Uh-huh.
Sorry, aids are being, at the kindergarten level, are aids being cut from that grade level?
You know why?
Oh, why, sorry? I thought, so, yeah, so I think if I can just clarify. There is indeed an deduction in the number of aides that we will be employing next year. And that's twofold. One reason is because the purpose of aides, we have to make sure that we're never imposing upon the LRA. So the LRA is the least restrictive environment. And in education, special education, as well as general education, we have to make sure that students are in the least restrictive environment. And when they need a more restrictive environment, the appropriate resources, whether they're human resources or other, are put in place. What we recognized was we had situations whereby the number of aides far exceeded what was required of our district. That being said, we also, with the addition of the kindergarten section next year, we're allocating money towards an additional kindergarten section that will ultimately reduce the kindergarten class size below the 25 level. So currently, as per state code, when you have a kindergarten classroom with 25 or more students, you must have an aide with the teacher. Also, as per code, a kindergarten teacher's certificate allows them to teach up to 25 students on their own. Right now, I will tell you with the budget the way it is, we are not completely eliminating kindergarten aides, but we are reducing the number in each building. So instead of having one aide in every classroom, there will be an allocation to each building. So they will have access to an aide designed for kindergarten, but we will make sure, hopefully, that with the reduction of the class size, the number will come down, thus the need for aide will come down.
And so that was a good point, because you said that the additional kindergarten is not an extra 25 kids that now we're going to be adding to the current number. We're going to be shifting, right?
That is correct. That is correct. And the reduction of kindergarten classroom last year, that was a decision that was made simply because our enrollment was extremely low. And it seemed as though September 1st or 2nd came around, and parents suddenly looked at their kids and said, "Oh, you're fine, I have to annoy your kindergarten." Which I completely get, as I have...
Yeah, but we lost one, now we're being...
Exactly, we're getting that one back. And hopefully that, I just actually pulled kindergarten numbers today. So right now, we're running 26 and 27 in class. So roughly, you could imagine if we had the same high number next year, think of that many pulls from each section, reducing that number, making those classes much more than we would want a kindergarten to be, and adding in another faculty member.
Yeah, good point. And then my other question about the deficit. And the response of the board is what?
Well, I think the deficit, if I'm not mistaken, started back in 1415. I don't know how many board members were here, but I think what happened was, we're doing it now, we made a correction with Scott coming in with meetings, and we meet every week. So what has happened in the past won't happen again. With this board this year, after all of this has come to light, we have a finance committee, and we meet every single week. And Scott provides the numbers of what's going out and what's coming in. And right now, we're in kind of a holding pattern to see whether or not we are going to get a monitor from the state. And when that monitor comes in, she or he makes all decisions. And she or he tells us what's going to be.
Aside from what you presented to the budget? This is separate?
That's correct.
And when you say holding pattern, what's why? Was that going to be, and we see it well?
It should be soon. There you go. Just so everybody knows, our 1819 budget was approved by the county Friday. We don't come out later for the fire, but that was approved. With that approval, now the preceding transaction is now both the county goes to the state, and at this time, we'll find out shortly if and when we get the monitor. My assumption is, yes, that's the case, sometime in June. Don't evaluate the writing, and we'll know for sure, but I would say...
And monitor would just be...
The monitor's main goal is controlling fiscal policy. They will receive the entire fiscal policy of the district. Anything the board wants to put in an act, that monitor gives a Jager answer. You know, they go through the whole school, I handle information, the bar, my end reports, and they review it, and at that point, they make a decision, yes or no.
But if the budget was approved, they can't then tell you any changes to that budget?
Most times, you want to get it in like we did, so don't make changes. That's why we cut back like we did to prevent any further cuts, hoping that it's the impact, but I can't say just now that...
But you can't, but it was approved to state, so in theory, they should have...
Correct. Correct.
A verbal agreement.
Correct. That's why they were very strict on how the process ever could get approved. They approved it Friday, so, okay. Go on.
So what are your questions are? What are your questions as how do we begin to give you guys a public trust again? And it has started. We have since January, definitely, we are, we've been meeting weekly, up until the last week. We're bi-weekly now. We're bi-weekly now, we're feeling comfortable enough that we go monthly.
I got the budget in place before.
No.
Were you doing that?
Never.
Oh, oh, okay.
Was never in place.
No, okay.
Yeah, and we put in a board resolution mandate.
Mandating of a meeting.
Minimum of monthly meetings, so...
That's true.
So hopefully, this will never happen.
Also, being a part of the finance committee, myself and the finance committee, has been fully a part of and understand very well the budget process and the making of the budget. So we're all very comfortable with what we came up with, and gave to the county, which we know now has been approved, and this is where they are. We're going to be doing a budget presentation on the budget on the following...
On, on May, on May 3rd.
To the public?
We are on a date, roughly, in the next two weeks.
But I do, even that, that information, I don't think this general knowledge of the meetings have been happening.
Yeah.
So I think that that's...
As long as I look at this administration. Right, as long as having this administrator, and water, or these stops, they put a place to their checks and balances, along with us being part of the process and understanding the process, too, that's, that's very important, that we understand the process and be part of the process, which is never turned a pass. So, I can, you know, I can really tell you that this 1819 budget is a very solid budget, you know, I can tell you, we're full confidence.
Thank you for all of your attention.
Thank you.
Hello. It's not me, it's not me. So hello, for those that don't know me, my name is Angela Ellis, and I'm a parent of three children, two of which are currently in the Linhurst school system, one at Memorial and the other at Columbus. I'm also a longtime proud Linhurst resident, went to school here, and my hope is that my children will get to see the best side of Linhurst. My real question, and I'll keep it short, today, really around the referendum, and I was hoping that we can get any of the construction efforts for our school system.
Okay, the, for Roosevelt and Columbus part of it, have the bids have come back, and they've been high bids, over what we've allowed, so those two schools have to be rebid. So the current cost projections from the bid contract has over exceeded what we had allotted. So we have to rebid those two schools. We did receive our bids back from the high school. We are in the process of opening those bids and reviewing those bids. At this point, it looks pretty good, but until we open all the bids and compare, we're just holding away.
So, I guess my follow-up question then, when do you see this effort realistically being completed?
Well, as soon as we get the bids back, we're hoping to break ground sometime in summer.
So you're saying from now till the summer, the bids will hopefully be accepted and started?
Yes. Whatever we have to do with the bids, to get this process going, we will.
I would say, I think my last comment is, I walk with the schools, the same tool that my children will soon walk. I just hope that they get the very best that they possibly can. They shouldn't be walking the same hallway that I walked 25 years ago.
Well, I walked those same hallways 50 years ago, 52 years ago.
And then I think you would feel the same as I do.
I, I, I do, and that's, I do, and that's why I'm here. Okay? To make sure that we do make approvals. You know, this, Mr. Marco, Mrs. Marco here, led the charge of the, to get what we have now, as far as we've gotten, and we passed the referendum two to one. Okay? So, that was the first time, I think, we passed a referendum in 10 years. Okay, so we are making progress. I know it's, when you're sitting out there, it's a very slow process, and as a parent, you know, you do want to get things going and see things change. I could assure you that they will, and we're taking the bids back now, and believe me, this board, with everyone who's here, is working extremely hard. I could guarantee you that. They have, I can't even tell you the amount of time we put in. So, we're looking out for, listen, I have grandchildren coming up here, I want the best of that. I don't want them walking the same halls that I walk either. But we're going to try, we're going to do what we can.
I mean, that's what I'm looking for, and I think that for most, I think it's the action that we really need as parents, when we start to see that things are going to happen, I think that that would be the comfort. Without it, it's just words, and that's not enough.
And you're absolutely right.
Thank you for all of your time, and thanks for your help.
Thank you. Christine Self.
Hello, thank you for your time. I just want to follow up on what we're having to do with the referendum. You had mentioned that we have to go through another big process. I was just curious, how long did the first big process take? So just we have an expectation, and on top of that, do you guys have a plan set for this entire project, so expected milestone, market, and they're slipping, you may be keeping that out to us?
Everything, everything is supposed to be completed by 2020. All the repairs, all the schools, all the additions and everything else we're doing.
So I guess more of mini milestones. I'm talking about, let me avoid the project one day, it's like, maybe it's done by 20, whatever, but I think as a community, it gives a little more, a little more better feeling, we want something smaller milestones, where like, okay, we know that, you know, this bid process is going to be, so we start to get this bid process, and be done with it, and start, you know, opening up loads and finding out what you have to do with this, so, I was looking at you, a little on my...
And I know you've been such a major supporter of this from day one, and I just, you know, it's wonderful to, you know, to be moving on through this district, knowing that it has this vast amount of money that the township has provided, that is not affected by the deficit, is not affected by any other findings, and is going to be an impetus for us to continue going with. But I really think the town is to be credited for having our, our future potential in our hands right now. So, a couple of things that I just want to point out. When we originally went out to bid on Roosevelt and Columbus schools, because they are the biggest projects, right? So two things in mind, they're the biggest projects, and we wanted to get them rocking and rolling first. Plus, we also wanted to make sure that when we went out to work, we always had a backup plan in the event that we had to evacuate a building. So if we think about that, we're working on the opposite corners of the town, right? So that's, that's the reason for starting there. And when we went out to bid, we recognized that, you know, we had a much longer winter than we had anticipated, and it was the ideal time to kind of shoot for the sun and the moon and the stars, right? Go for it all. And that's essentially what we did. We really went for everything on that original bid, because worst-case scenario, you go out to rebid when you bring that back. But it also works to our advantage, because even though it did come back higher and probably in the arena that we had anticipated, but going out to rebid sends a message to contractors that, okay, we're going to do some things, we're going to settle for, maybe we'll, we'll keep the stars up there, we'll take the sun and the moon, but if, you know, what can you want to do for us as well?
Because you're reducing stuff.
Exactly, and, but nothing, right, so, and that, no, no, we cannot, now that is so important, I'm glad that you mentioned that, we cannot change the scope of the project. What we, what, and I want to remove myself, what this board promised you, the state says we will ensure this board gives to you. When they send you a board to get for your $19.8 million, educationally, that's what you will get. When I talk about what we went for, there were really funky, you know, cool pendant lights that would have created a, you know, perfect classroom environment, and they were very expensive, and we realized, you know, oh, we're going to have to pick and choose where we're going to have those pendant lights, and the other rooms, we're going to have just really good quality lights. So when we're talking about that, we're really talking about material and architectural, I don't want to say extravagances, but, you know, architectural items that would not affect the educational scope of the project, really facility scope of the project, right? So, by, our cuts, again, we're not imposing on anything that you were presented with, you still have to get that. But what we are doing now is, we're going out for this rebid. Now, when we go out for rebid, the nice thing with our rebid is we now know the bids of the high school, and we now know that the high school may be a little less than we had anticipated the high school bid. So that now means we have a little bit more money allocated to the elementary schools, and that's always a nice thing, right? Kind of like getting something less than you had plans for. So that's another, you know, piece working in our, in our favor. With regard to the scope of the project, once Roosevelt and Columbus begin, what the estimates of time have been from the contractors is that those jobs should run roughly 18 to 20 months each, okay? That being said, once each of those schools, once each of those areas of construction are in a good sound place, where we know things are going the way we need them to go, we haven't, you know, had any penetration results that we didn't anticipate, et cetera, that's when this group will be going out to bid on Franklin and Washington schools.
I guess what I consider is that 18 to 20 months is a really long time. I would want to get to 17 months and find out that the six months are not scheduled. So I was just wondering, in a whole construction project, we would expect the foundation to lay within certain months. Smaller milestones may be scored, just something that we can kind of keep our eye on the wall, so we're not all of a sudden, 17 months, saying, oh wow, we're still working on the foundation.
So, so two, so two pieces now, let Mr. Bruno speak about the committee that's here, who will, that was just formed, that will be speaking to you routinely, but we do have an owner's rep. So the work of Mr. McKeever as our attorney, they set specific milestones, if you will, that need to be reached, and if they're not reached, we get money back.
That's exactly right.
And we have an owner's rep hired to be watching that. So that works very much against any of the contractor work. That's part, that's part of the big qualifications, absolutely. But Mr. Bruno can speak about the committee.
Okay. This, when the referendum, when Mr. Marco led the charge in the referendum, we got it passed, and, you know, like everything else, it takes time to catch up to what we want to do. So we have now, since Mrs. DeMarco is no longer on this committee, or really in charge because she has been, she's led straight to this point, we have four Board of Education members who are now on the referendum committee. So we will probably be meeting weekly, or bi-weekly, depending on the situation. And if you have any concerns, the committee will be ready to answer whatever questions you have, if we can. You know, you talk about construction things, you know, this winter's gone on a little bit long. So if you run into that kind of a situation again, there's really nothing they can do about it when you're in a down, snow...
Yeah, I think one concern, you know, personally, I just can't bear to disagree. You know, things are just...
Well, we have a committee, we have a committee set up, four of us that will be as transparent as we can.
Awesome.
Will let you know every step of the way, and hey, feel free to come up to the microphone and ask your questions, because that's how you're being formed. If you don't ask...
Speaking of asking, this is, this is another question I had. I have heard or remember, and I figured, as well, that out-of-town people can use our pre-K program, and they don't get charged for that?
No, that's not true.
They're not, and I just want to add, I want to... We had a situation whereby, last school year, we, we were, we, I don't want to say, we assumed it was the pre-K program from the town. The town had already enrolled into the pre-K 3 program students from North Arlington, so they had always been invited, and they had already promised that registration. So the last thing we wanted to do was to undo parents' plans based on what they had anticipated. So we kept those students at tuition, of course, but they were allowed to attend Linhurst. Instead of then having them forced to leave their friends for pre-K 4, they were screaming, grandfathered them for pre-K 4 for this year, and were able to finish their pre-K experience with us again at tuition. But this, but as of our registration last summer, for the current school year, we no longer accepted out-of-town students. They had to be Linhurst residents, and they had to be paying the tuition. Thank you.
Derek Seaton had a really great question a few more weeks ago. He had brought up the fact that, was it possible to go back and recruit money from prior auditors that might have done a stellar job as we had originally thought? Is that to look into? Is there any action on that? Like, I don't have a phenomenal part of it.
That's a great question. And from my point of view, we could look into that. Does that agree with you?
Yeah.
And I'll leave that up to the lead by my school further, but we are looking into it, yes. I'll play it anyway. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have a question about the AC in the high school. There's no AC this summer.
Is there AC this summer?
Yeah, like...
No.
Last, last year, my son was attending high school here, and he came...
There's no, there's no, there's no air conditioning in high school?
Yeah.
There is some, in some, yeah, in some classrooms there are, but throughout the school, no.
It's, it's a problem, but my son, last year, he came and blocked, like, the high direction, blocked from his normal, blocked from the heat.
So are there any plans, or, like, there are some construction plans that we have to, to introduce, sorry, are there any plans for to leave ACs at the high schools as, you know, that needs some construction work and...
Okay, well, to be, to be frank with you, in the scope of this referendum, no.
Like, this, last year, he came and blocked...
Listen, I agree with you 100%.
Like, he's there, window, window, AC, like, in each class. But like, like, I came to the meeting here, I got swelled like hell inside. I was like, this is 8 hours inside now.
All right, listen, I, I, I know what you're saying, I remember sitting here and sweltering, and hoping that sooner or later it would be done, but the, the scope of the project cannot include air conditioning because of the cost factor. You know, we're looking, we're, let me say this, we're still looking into the idea of air conditioning, but we can't make any progress, because in the scope of the project, it was not in there. So we can't change the scope. I'd love to have air conditioning in there. Anyone else? I'm sorry, couldn't give you a better answer. Okay. Make the motion to adjourn.
Say yes.
Roll. Ms. Mallon.
Yes.
Ms. Jarvis.
Yes.
Ms. Brenn, not this.
Four.
Ms. Scott.
Four.
Ms. Drell.
Four.
Ms. Dunn.
Four.
Ms. Keane.
Four.
Ms. Akiri.
Four.
Ms. Borah.
Four.
Thank you very much for coming.